Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwai. Hey Greg.
Hey everybody, we're really glad you're here today.
We are, we're so excited. We also have Julie and Colin for my team here today. What's up guys?
How's it going everyone?
And we also have a very special guest with us today. You may have recognized her from previous trainings, but if you are just getting to know her today, you're in for a treat. Welcome up to Platinum with Young Living, Jackie with Laughlin. Hey Jackie.
Hey everybody.
So like we said, we're excited to have you here today as we are every week, our favorite day of the week. It's Thursday at 2:00 PM Eastern US Time. This is our opportunity to sit down with you and explore new ways for you to grow Young Living, for you to share more effectively, and for you to get things done in a way that feels fulfilling and light and fun for your business because you know, you obviously get into this by choice. It's not a job. It is something that should be really fun and fulfilling for you. And with Get Oiling, you can design a business that runs the way you want it to. And so today, we're going to be talking about a non-Get Oiling tool that you can use with Get Oiling that a lot of you may be familiar with. If you're not familiar with it, you will be soon enough. And Jackie here is a bit of an expert in it. She uses this tool on a regular basis in her business. It is called Sway. It is a presentation style from Microsoft. I'm going to get into some slides here in just a second and kind of talk through this a little bit before Jackie shares with us some of what she does. Go ahead and head into the chat or into the comments in Facebook if you're watching this live. Go ahead and let us know where you're coming in from and what you are excited to learn about today. As always, we're just so thrilled to have you here and to have this time with you every week. So we're going to go ahead panelists here and pop out a video. We're going to turn off our video. We're going to come back here in just a bit. I'm going to go through some slides here with you. Hello and welcome. Keep it coming in the chat there. Today as promised, we're going to talk about using Sway presentations with Get Oiling and you're going to learn how to create great sways. A few years back when Sways I think were really hitting peak popularity with Team Young Living. We actually had a training on this and so we're kind of doing an update on that here today. But there have been requests that have that have come through over the years that have asked not just how do we use sways that other people made, but how do we make our own? And that is specifically why I asked Jackie to come and join us today. Because this is actually something that she uses not just as a tool from from third-party providers. And you can actually go to our partners page on our Get Oiling website and learn about Grow Workspace specifically. They actually have tons of incredible sways. Jackie uses them. I know a lot of you guys do too. But if you want to make them your own, if you want to create something that is your own or you want to use them in different ways, then you might be able to maybe purchase from Grow Workspace. This is going to be a great opportunity for you to learn here today. So let's get into what's happening. We're going to talk first about what a sway is and why you might want to be using them. We'll talk about importantly, how you can use this really cool thing with Get Oiling because it's a thing that you can use, right? And it's something that you can use even if you don't have Get Oiling. But if you have Get Oiling, there is a really powerful combination that happens here that we'll talk about a little bit. We'll also talk about with Jackie, of course, how to create sways. And then Jackie has actually created a resource for you guys that we will talk about here today as well that pertains specifically to how she uses them. And she's got a specific use case and we'll be giving you tools to that end, both a sway that you can use and modify and make your own as well as tools and Get Oiling you can use to share it. And then of course, as always, we have our live help and Q and A. We do have a couple of folks signed up for that today. If you are here for your live help session, definitely head over to the Q and A. Just make sure our team knows that you're here so we can be looking out for you in the second half of the call to work together. Now, if you are here otherwise for any reason and you have questions, feel free to also add that to the Q and A here on the call. The chat can get a little busy and we do have, because we're in a Zoom webinar here, a Q and A section. So you can ask any questions, even if they don't pertain to today's topic. And we will try to make all the space that we can to accommodate those questions as they come through. Now, if you'd like to join one of these calls on Zoom, if you're watching this from our Facebook group where we're streaming, or if you are watching this on YouTube as a replay, come join us on one of these live calls. We are live at noon Eastern US Time every Thursday except for major US holidays. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list. You'll be the first to get replays and resources and to know about what's coming up next. Of course, you get the link to join us live. If you would like to work together live, as several people may very well be doing on today's call, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review. Whether you are just getting your feet wet with Get Oiling or you are building something very sophisticated or complicated, we've got an opportunity to work together to review your strategies, to review your work and to help you in a hands-on basis. If you feel stuck or you just want to get some feedback, take advantage of this free opportunity. It happens in the second half of these live calls that we host every Thursday at noon Eastern US Time. And of course, if you are looking to have help, but you'd like for someone to get it done for you, we have a team for that. You can go to getoiling.com/concealers to learn about our incredible qualified team, see some of the work that they've done, what feedback they've received from folks who have hired them. The sky is truly the limit here in terms of what you can create with Get Oiling and with our team's expertise. So definitely go check them out if you're looking for some hands-on help. Now, let me know in the chat, come into the chat and let me know, do you use sways? Is this something that you use that you are aware of, that you are maybe actively using in some way or another? Karen says that she uses the sways from Grow Workspace. I think a lot of us who are here, a lot of Get Oiling users also use Grow Workspace. They have fantastic stuff that plugs right into Get Oiling and they do definitely have a lot. But Karen says she's not created her own. How many of you have created your own? Awesome. Oh, I love it. Okay, so we've got some familiarity, but also some folks that maybe don't know quite as much about it. Dr. Brown says it's fun. Fantastic. I think you and Jackie are probably in the same boat where that's concerned. Awesome, awesome. Good to hear it. Thank you for sharing you guys. So for those of you who don't know about sways, let's just go ahead and cover this real quick. What is a sway? Basically, a sway is a presentation or a document file, but what Microsoft calls it is a storytelling app. It's a digital storytelling app, but it's not an app for your phone, at least not anymore. I think when they created it, they envisioned it to be sort of like a mini website, except you don't need a domain kind of thing. That's not quite what it turned out to be. I think what this really is and the value of sway in the most direct way is is a way to get the benefit of video without creating video and to deliver a presentation without being present, right? So it's kind of the best of both worlds, somewhere between a website, a PDF and a video. All right, so it utilizes like those resources that I just listed, like text, images, you can embed videos into it. You can have links in it and you can create animations that show up in the presentation just like you would with PowerPoint presentation or video or even a website. And it holds readable information like a PDF or a PowerPoint style or keynote style presentation where you're actually walking people through sort of one slide, if you will, of information at a time. So it is a really great presentation tool. It's just a lot more interactive and fun than just sending somebody some PowerPoint slides. So it's scrollable, kind of like a website and interactive, kind of like a video, and allows you to present without being present. Which makes this a fabulous tool for teaching and for sharing bite-sized pieces of information about young living, right? And importantly, where it pertains to using your Get Oiling site, sways are easy to embed and to share with Get Oiling. So let's talk a little bit about how brand partners use sways and we're going to let Jackie, of course, as well, get into detail about all the different ways that she uses them. But just a quick overview, you can use these sways for monthly newsletters. You can have on-demand classes, like many of you probably have some for Workspace. You can teach about Young Living, whether that's the opportunity or different programs like like Loyalty Rewards, right? This is also something you can use and this is something that Jackie is going to be talking with you about today as well. You could also use it to create three things to grow your list. So freebies or lead magnets you can create with sway. And in terms of how one might use sway with Get Oiling, first, and I'll share with you the most optimal ways first and then ways that you can also use it that aren't quite as optimal as these first two. So the most optimal option in terms of using a sway is to take a sway file and embed it onto a page on your Get Oiling site. So it's going to behave almost like a video would. So someone could scroll down a page, see this sway and then scroll within the sway and see all of this great presented information on the page. They could take it full screen, et cetera. Putting a sway onto your Get Oiling site is more beneficial than just sending a sway link for a couple of reasons. The main reason being though, that it provides more opportunity for your website to increase in authority. And this is kind of a sticky big topic, SEO and website authority. But if you want to have a website on the internet that search engines find trustworthy, it's important that people are going there and they're clicking on stuff, right? And so that means that at any opportunity you possibly have where you can be sharing a link, it ought to be a link to somewhere on your website. So if you create a sway, the best place for it to live is on your Get Oiling website, either on a page or on inside your vault, which I'll talk about in a second. So embedding into your page on your Get Oiling site is an excellent thing for you to do to share monthly newsletters. This is something that allows you to have one page on your website that is always the Young Living newsletter, but you could simply update the sway file on a monthly basis. And for some of you, you might find that it is maybe a little easier for you to modify because it is more of a presentation and maybe feels a little less daunting than redesigning elements of an entire webpage, right? So so you have the opportunity here to use these to to share those to share those monthly updates from Young Living. You could also, and this is such a powerful tool for you to use, if you have a member area with a vault for your Young Living customers for customer education, to take sways that maybe teach about products or specific Young Living programs and features and put those inside of lessons in your online classes. Now, this means that you don't have to go and create brand-new lesson content. You can simply embed a sway inside of an online class lesson and you've got your ninja teaching and your thieves teaching and all of that stuff where it needs to go. And then of course, if you wanted to put that on to embed that onto a page on your website as well, you wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. You're basically taking content and plugging it in from one place into another on your website. So this does allow you that ability to teach in-depth, more effectively and on autopilot, again, presenting without being present, without having to create lengthy videos, which is often the other sort of ultimate way of doing things, right? If you want to teach something, video online is going to be the most powerful way to teach. And this is as close as you're going to get to it without creating a video. And then of course, and this is something you can do, you can take the sway link because when you create a sway, it does have its own URL. You can take that link and put it into an email or a text broadcast or into a campaign, should you choose. All right, so let's learn from Jackie how she uses sways and then check out the resources that she has created for you. So first, Jackie, before we get into this, for anybody who maybe doesn't know you yet, tell us a little bit about you and your background.
Yeah, well, first of all, just thanks for having me. I love making sways. And I will tell you, do not be intimidated by what you don't know. I'm almost 71 years old and I make it a point to always be learning something new because you know what they say about your brain. If you don't use it, you lose it. And if you really want to stay sharp as you age, one of the best things you can do is learn new things. So Get Oiling always has great things to learn from. Don't be overwhelmed by it. Just use it. Think of it as a tool for your brain and dive in and chip away at things a little bit at a time. But when I started with Young Living over 21 years ago, I've never left. I did go inactive in the beginning because I didn't know anything and nobody was supporting me. But I came back because the products, right? And so, you know, I've been around for a long time. I've seen every little thing that's come down the pipe for your business. And Get Oiling, number one, is I've tried all the other replicated websites and all that jazz. And these guys are the cat's meow, let me just tell you. And responsive, constant training, the whole nine yards, you guys are in the best place possible. And I just hope I can add a little bit to that by helping you learn how to use this tool called sways with your Get Oiling site because it's amazing what you can do with it. The only word of caution I will give you is, don't let it take over and create a sway junkie because it can be so fun that you literally can become a sway junkie and not get your other good things done. So temper your sway activity. I'm going to show you the basics today because like everything else, you got to start with the building blocks and build on that. I didn't have anybody teach me this. You can learn this on your own if you're motivated to get in there and just look for things and experiment. You can't mess it up. So click on things and do things and and just have fun with it because you can't ruin it. And it saves itself. So you don't have to worry about, oh, I forgot to save it and my computer crashed. You're probably going to get at least most of it back if you have a crash. So let's just dive in.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for that. So can you start off by telling us a little bit about the different ways that you use sway? So I think to start out, everyone should know, as is probably the case for a lot of people here, you use sways that other people make too, right? You aren't just making all of this yourself. You've got the Grow Workspace sways, a ton of them. And where do you use those primarily?
Yeah, most of those are in my members area, in my education vaults. And there's other ways to use them, but that's what I chose to do with them. And I didn't know anything about sway before I started using. You know, that kind of exposed me to sways. And then I just said, um, these are kind of cool. Let me make some more stuff. And it's just taken off from there. I do create a new newsletter every month, but it's super easy because I duplicate the one from the month before, swap out the pictures, change the stuff. And so it's not like, doesn't have to be starting from scratch. And I'm going to show you how to do that kind of stuff today. And then of course, I use it for, I'm going to just going to show you an example and something that you'll get today in the bundle. And I left this very plain because I didn't want to put a bunch of branding and stuff on it. But this would could be used as like a lead magnet type thing. And it's a webpage in Get Oiling and basically it's talking about holistic plant-based living. And it, you know, hits the high points. And here's the sway. Now, when you get a sway embedded on a page, you see this little box right here with the four arrows. If you click on that, it will make it full-size. Or you can just scroll down here and see what's in here. So this particular sway and webpage that you're going to have access to is about setting up a Young Living account, basically. So these are getting started options that I put in the sway. We got the premium starter bundle and it shows the price and the value. And it shows what's in it. And then the Thieves bundle and the Ninja Red bundle and some of the Make-a-shift kits. So this is a basic thing. And then at the end, you would put, you're going to edit yours. I gave you one in the bundle that is not branded. So you're going to have to go in and put your own picture and your own referral link and things like that in here, but that's on there. You could also put this information, you could, you could put it on the page itself in another section. But this is one of the things you're going to get today. And so that's one way to use it. I create newsletters, like I said, let me go to another. Figure out where my stuff is. Okay, this is one I created really quickly yesterday or day before. And I call it the bees of Young Living. So this is a sway presentation. And this video is in the library, in the Young Living library, that you can go download to your computer. And you can use it in your videos that Greg has shown you guys in the past, how to have videos that you can send out to people or put on your website. So this could be added to those videos. And this is a cool video. It's like two minutes long. I'm not going to play the whole thing. But it's basically the farm in France. I think it'll work. Maybe my internet's not good enough because I do live out in the country. Anyway, oh, here we go.
One of the cool things we get to do with Babader is not just the oil. We also get to have bee hives in all of our fields. And the bees produce an amazing lather honey. Our honey is so delicious because we take great care of our bees.
So that's a really cool video that I just put really quickly into a sway. And this is, I sent it out to my team members and it's just like, hey, check out the bees of Young Living. And you can put your branding information on there. And those are fun things that you can do with it. You could upload this in a million different places and Get Oiling. So just, just go for it. Other things that I do is I create product information education. So let's say like last night I had a class, we had a class about frankincense and it was all about research. And I created a sway for frankincense research and I listed all these different research articles with the link in it. And people, they would come to the to the class and we would have a Zoom call and we would have open discussion. And we don't record them. So we can talk like we're at the kitchen table, right? And but then they get an email afterwards from Get Oiling. I create a campaign message that goes out after we're done. And everybody that signed up gets tagged. I go look for the tags. I call up the and I bulk send out the campaign message for post-event frankincense discussion. And then they get this email with a sway embedded in it that has all those research articles and things about frankincense. And it was fascinating. People loved it. We had a great time. So you can do classes and use this as follow-up information that you would send. So every time we do a Zoom call, I always have a post-event message that sort of gives the bullet points and some of the education. And a lot of times that will be in a sway. Sometimes it's in just a graphic, depends on what it is. But if there's a lot of information, I'll put it in a sway. You could do ninja red sway. You could do a thief sway. Like Ashley mentioned earlier, you got your on-demand classes. So let's say you have a hormone class and and you want to put all your information in there. So let's just get into literally how to do a sway. So let me go back here. Well, wrong. Wrong side. Let me find my sways. So if you don't have a Microsoft account, the first step is to set up a free sway or a free account. And once you have a free account, then you will, and you could go to microsoft.com. And then when you get to microsoft.com, you go to sign in and then create. If you don't have a Microsoft account at all, you can also go to sway.com. And if you have a Microsoft account, you can, you can start that way. But as an example, let's just go into something that I don't mind changing. Well, let's go into the bees of Young Living and we'll just act like we're messing with that one. So when you first, or let's just start with a brand-new sway. That's probably easier. So you can start from a document, but what I have found in my experience that that's, I would say, do that later because sometimes the formatting gets a little honky. And so start with create new. I've tried doing start from a topic and and they give you some suggested stuff. I have found that to be less than productive. So just start with create new. And when you create new, it comes up like this and you're just going to give it a title. So let's say we're going to give it whoops, all about bees. And I'm not going to worry about typos. But this is your, this is your title. Now, we're going to go, we want to give it a design. We want to start to make it look some way. So this is your design tab right here. And we can go into design. And then on the far right side, you see styles. If I click on styles, it's going, I'm going to move this thing over. When I click on styles, it brings up some of these already-done styles. And you can flick through them and just see what they look like. So this is the one that just came up for some reason. Maybe I used it recently. I don't know. But you can, you can click on something that's more plain Jane, that just gives you like fonts and colors. You can change it. And every time you click a different one, you'll see what it looks like. You can grab something like this that has some little background stuff on it and banners that are in red. So that's what this indicates. It's a red banner. And there's a blue banner with a different background. So you're going to pick and you can scroll through these. You see there's more. If you click on the arrows to the right, there's lots of different ones. And if these solid ones down here are going to give you a solid color background. Those are a little overwhelming. I don't recommend them, but it might be, it might be appropriate for a specific thing that you're doing. So don't count them out. And you can scroll down and see all different kinds. Some of these little really wild ones can be fun as long as it's appropriate for what you're talking about. So you're going to pick your style and you can change it. So let's say we pick this style here. And we're going to go back to storyline when we want to add more stuff to our, oh, the other thing is, this is horizontal. I want vertical. I prefer to scroll down. That's what people are used to on their phones. But you could make a horizontal where they scroll sideways. But I like the horizontal ones or I mean, the vertical ones. So you could pick your style that way. This is slides that are side-by-side. You could pick that too. But go back to storyline once you've picked on your design. And this is how you add things. If you put a picture in here, so if I come in here and I go to look at my pictures. And let's go to sorry, I have a jillion pictures. If I go to thieves. And let's say I just picked this one. Whoops, I didn't want to click on it. Hold on, it's going to open it.
And I think you're, that's your photos that are maybe on your computer, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because we can't actually see you selecting those right now.
Okay, hold on one second.
While we're in the process there, Anna Connie has a question about how you organize your sways. She said that she's had trouble sometimes just finding her sways because she uses Grow Workspace. And she finds it hard, hard to easily find one in all of her sway stuff.
Yes, if you, if you leave them in sway and they can, they just like are hard to find. So you want to export them either as a PDF or as a Word doc. And you do that from inside of sway. So and that's a very good point because I had the same problem and still have the same problem. So
A quick recommendation along those lines as well, Jackie, while you're getting to that point. When, when you've completed a sway and you have the shareable or embeddable links ready, you could give the, you could create a saved reply and Get Oiling for whatever that sway is. Give it the name and then just go ahead and drop in the embed code or the embedded sway or the URL for the sway. And then you can drop that into your, because saved replies work in campaigns. They work in blog posts. They work in in lessons. So almost anywhere you would use a sway, with the exception of a page on your website, you could use that saved reply to get it popped in.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. Awesome. Okay, so if I take this thieves photo that's in a file on my computer and I drag it over here to this box. Um, it's going to put this in here, but if you put it in a title or a heading box, it's going to make it huge. So I'm just going to show you when I hit play. How big that is. If you want that, it's great. But if you don't want that, you're going to go add an image file. And let's just drag it down here instead. And so now when I hit play. It's much more, you know, manageable. It it looks better. And and of course, this particular. Um, template that I used um, is lines it up this way. Sometimes if I picked a different. Uh, design, it's going to look different. Let's just go with that one. And. Oh, I haven't put any words yet, so that's why edit. There, took a minute to load. Um, and so if I go back to storyline, the next thing I want probably is going to be a text box. So I had a text box and. Somebody made a comment about my saying, you can tell I'm an old timer. Um, thieves is the cat's meow. And you would put all your text info and it's going to line up here in a paragraph form. Um, because that's the way this particular one is set up. So you're going to play with different formats. And what you can do also, let's say you have more text. And you want to add a heading somewhere in here. If I go to like right here, I can s- I can slap a heading in there. And start talking about the uh, thieves. I don't know, the um. Mouthwash and toothpaste or something and do a whole section on just that. Uh, so you can, you could do a lot of different things. You can move these around. Drag them up and down just by dragging them. Um, you can also group them. So I want to group these two so you can see how that looks different. Um, let's just say. More info, more info, more. More and um, let's look at what that looks like. And this picture is here. Uh, if I go down here and I drag this up until it says group. Now it's going to stick those two together. And if there's a lot of information in here, when I stick them together as a group. Then when I view it, this photo is going to move down the page with the information if it's long. If it's just really short, it's not going to move because it's going to, it's not going to be big enough, but. So if for instance, if if this information kept talking. This picture would follow it down as they scroll through the page because I stuck it in together as a group. And so that's how you do that. Um. There are so many things you can do with sway. I just want to help you with the real pertinent things. If you want to make. A uh, let's go in here and we want to do a stack of photos. So. Stop share. Um, go back to sway. Re-share.
Do you happen to have uh, any dimension recommendations for media files? That question.
They, they resize them very nicely. I haven't had to worry about sizes. Um, that's the cool thing. Um. So let's say I want to stack some photos about thieves so I can drag one over here from this file. I can drag another one. And when you drag them, just make sure you see that turquoise line. If I go down here, it's going to put it in another section. So make sure it's up here where the plus sign is. That's so annoying.
Like we're cur- we're only viewing your um, your file manager right now. We can't see this way.
Okay, hold on. That's the tricky thing about sharing different windows. Um.
Yeah.
Let's see, back to. Where's my sway? Need to close this. Okay. Zoom. Share screen. Okay. So I think I can open, if if I open this picture thing, I think that's. What I was trying to show y'all. There's another picture. Is that working?
Uh, yeah, we're seeing a picture load right now.
Okay, good. I'm just dragging these pictures from my file folder. Um, and so I want to show you how the stack works. So there's three pictures in a stack. And um, I can go up here to the top of the stack after this third one loads. And I can change the size of the photo. And this is true for any, anytime you put a photo in. You can go up here and um, change the size of it. And you can also pick the focus. So I I always go into focus. The entire image is important. Because I don't want it cutting off part of it depending on what. Uh, what they're looking at it on a phone or something else. So you want to pick and the entire image is important. And if you don't and you just want to highlight a certain portion of the picture, you can do that too with focus points. But um. So I have the entire images is important. And then I'm going to go in here and show you what that looks like. So now we have, oh, I wanted to change the size. Hold on, I'm going to make this bigger.
While we're doing that, um, could you also show us up in the top how you can change the background color where you have the title, all about thieves?
Yes.
And it was asked here as well. And then after this, I think it might be really helpful to um, to actually maybe show a version of your newsletter. On the front and back end, just to kind of give people an idea of of what those two things look like in contrast.
Okay. Alright, so here's a stack of photos. And whenever there's a stack like this, if you click on one, it takes it to the next one. And then there's the next one. So um. Going up to the, you're talking about changing this color?
Yes.
The banner. If that was a, that was chosen when I picked it here.
Got you. Okay.
So if I pick the purple one. It's going to make it purple.
Okay, and if you click customize, does that allow you to?
Yes.
To make modifications there too. There you go. So you can actually go and customize the the exact color you want to use throughout.
Yeah, yeah. So let's say I wanted to pick this one because it's kind of a thievesy color. Maybe. I don't know, it's not acting right, but maybe because I'm on um, Zoom. But let me just stop share here and I'm going to go grab. Um, a newsletter.
I think one of the great benefits of uh, of using the the sway for newsletters. Is that you can have a static link on your Young Living site, right? Where you have this information that's there. It's always there. And you don't have to worry about trying to modify the design of a page. If you've got the sway mostly made, all you've got to do is either update the same one. Uh, or you can of course then sw- swap it out. And the link that you're sharing with your team, maybe you've got that email scheduled ahead of time. Uh, you know, to say, hey, here's this month's newsletter. You can have that scheduled six months in advance because it's always going to the same page. You're just changing the sway that's on the page. So here's uh, your your September one. Thanks for sharing this.
Yeah, so this is September. And when you come down here, I've got some like housekeeping stuff at the beginning. And then this is where I'm promoting my uh, Zyto link scans to my team. And you see how that mm, photo moved down? That's what I was talking about when you glue it to as a group. And then this would be a heading right here, September success. And this particular template that I used, when I did bold, it made the print the same color as the banner. Uh, and then there's another heading. And then I started talking about studying for getting back to school and oils to use. And stress oils and product of the month for jumping into fall and the supplement of the month. And here's a stack of photos that I, like I showed you before. And these are just room sprays and. Recipes and things like that. And then we had um. More recipes. These are uh, this was, this here is where I uh. Put a link to the uh, life steps. And if if you get this, you just say trust all links in this sway. Uh, um, and that's just making sure it's it's safe. But if I click on this, it's going to take me to the. Life steps website page for me that has the autumn handbook. And then they can see all the information that's in the autumn handbook. Uh, then I have some great cooking recipes. So we got butternut squash soup. And of course, you know, I've got oils in there. For those recipes, uh, pumpkin spice smoothie, salads, some carrots, and then our team events. This was our frankincense discussion. This is our table talk Thursday. And then I have some stuff for brand partners. Uh, this is. Making sure everybody knows about customers and share YO links and all that good stuff. And then I have another sway that is the promos each month. So I just put a link for that in here if they, and it will take them to the sway that's just the promos for the month. And then um. Helpful graphics about sharing young living. And then there's my stuff at the bottom. So that was my newsletter for September. Um. Other cool things, and you can make this stuff look a lot different. Um, I'm going to go back to sway. And um, show you one other. Just to show you kind of what, what's possible. So this was the one I did for convention. And again, products, new products that came in, all the info. Um, the new, the original valor, all the good stuff. I did have all the deep spectra stuff in here in the beginning. But I took it out because it, nobody can get it. So why get them all frustrated?
Jackie, there's a question. Uh, we got some, some compliments, of course, here on your work. Um. There was a question here about uh, whether, where did that go? Um, di- did you see, uh, have you seen maybe a difference or a an improvement in how. Uh, folks are interacting with your newsletter content when you put it into a sway? Like, is that something that you feel is particularly different from maybe. Putting all of that information into an email or on a webpage?
Yeah, visually, it's just a lot more fun to read. And so if, you know, if you put a whole bunch of words in an email and um. You know, maybe you put some graphics in there, but because this is more interactive, uh, it's more fun to read. And I, I feel like people are more likely to actually look at it. Um, there's one other thing I want to show y'all real quick because it's super important. And that is how do you share a sway? So once you've got your share, your share, your sway created. There's a couple of things. When you're in edit mode or storyline mode, up here at the three dots on the top next to the word share. This is where you can choose whether or not settings for this sway. You're going to click settings for this sway. And if you want people to be able to duplicate your sway and then. Edit it as their own. Then you want to check this first box. So if you're making sways for your team that they want to personalize. You want them to be able to duplicate it. If you're making this for, to go out and you don't want other people using your hard work. Then you uncheck this little box so they can't duplicate it. Uh, so duplicate this way. They can, if you want them to be able to change the layout of this way when they're viewing it, you can leave this checked or unchecked. Uh, and then the sway information at the bottom. What that is, if I check it. Can't see my cursor, so I can't drag it. Here we go. Is this, this right here? So if you uncheck that, this will not show up. So I always uncheck it because I don't want that on there. It's just, it's not me and it doesn't need to be there. So um. So if you want them to be able to duplicate it, you want to be sure this box is checked. Um, there's other settings up here that you can use. You can save it as a template. So like when. Ashley was talking about, if you find one you really like and you want it to be the same every month. You can save it as a template and then go in and put the different information in. Um, accessibility checker is a good way to see how it's going to look on different things. And accessibility view is how, how will they view that? Um, here's the help button. So just like Get Oil has their help button and they can. If you have questions about how to do something, this is a good place to do it. So once you have these settings the way you want them, and now you want to share it, you're going to click share. And if you just want to share a link. You grab it here that you just copy that link. If you want to embed it in your Get Oil um. Website on a page or whatever. You're going to grab the embed code here and copy it. And then Greg has training about how you embed that into uh, wherever it is you're putting it. Uh, your information that you're getting in your um. Bundle code today will have a webpage. And a saved reply. And there's information in there in red. That is going to be um, how, what you need to do. So you want to duplicate the sway first. And then you're going to make your changes and personalize it. Before you do stuff with the website. So um, Ashley is sharing that now. Um, can you view the um. Either the page or the.
So this is the sway that you're getting, which is super exciting. Make sure that when you're editing this, that you go through and get your leaf links and get oiling. Because you're going to be sharing this publicly. Make sure that these all go to your leaf links so that when they go to get thieves vitality or any of the other products that are listed here. When they make a purchase or add something to cart, it goes to your uh, your Young Living. Uh, account. So I'm going to go ahead and claim these real quick. I did just put this into the uh, the webinar chat there. We're going to claim the bundle and there's a page and a saved reply in here. I'll go ahead and open both of them. So this is the page Jackie actually showed at the very beginning. Um, and you'll find.
Right there in the red, that's your instructions. Uh, what you need to do with that sway to make it branded to you. You see, or the page. You see the, where I have the page labeled, the name of the page is unbranded. When you, when you grab that in your settings. You can change that. Once you've edited it, you can take out unbranded and that way you know you've done it.
Yep. There you go. So you will want to change that here in your page settings uh, once you've claimed it. But let me just show you really quickly how, let's pretend that you've already edited your sway. I'm going to go to share and get embed code. Copy to clipboard. We're going to go down here and uh, I'm just going to create a new section so I keep the instructions there. You can obviously hide this so that no one ever sees it. Um, but we're just going to pretend like we are going to add a video. And go to embed code and then paste that embed code right there. Like use, like done. And the sway is now here. On the page. Now you get access to this. You also get access to a saved reply. So this will make sending this very easy. So maybe you want to drop this into a campaign. Maybe you send this to the page, this page that we've just created here, right? Uh, and so then you could be offering this as a freebie. Uh, and um, let's see what else, what else. Yeah, just like I showed you how to embed, you can embed onto a lesson. Uh, in an online class if you wanted to use this for teaching. Um. And oh yeah, there was one other. Actually, Jackie, you were giving away the uh, the bees sway too, right? Uh, here's the, the bees of young living. So all you have to do is click here. And you'll get access to this bees of young living one as well. Of course, you would want to duplicate this. And uh, make this your own, change out the links here, but it's already got that video that Jackie shared earlier embedded.
Be a favor, can you go that um, that. Sway of the bees and make, uh, because I don't remember if I checked the settings up there, the three dots. I may ha- I need to go into mine and make it duplicatable.
Okay.
But, oh, and that's the other cool thing. If you go in and and you, let's say you've put a sway on a webpage and get oiling. And you go back and you change something in the sway. It will change it on the page. It, because it's in, it's embedded. It's part of the file itself. it will change it on the page it because it's it's embedded. It's part of the file itself. So wherever it lives, it changes it there too. So yay.
Yeah, that's amazing. Uh so that's how you can keep a page up to date all the time. All you gotta do is just edit this way and when you save this way, your Get Oiling page is updated too. That's awesome.
There's one other thing. Yeah, there's, there's one other thing I wanted to show you guys of how I use um. Uh can you just go to my webpage, Ashley? You can probably do that.
Oh yeah, this is such a great example. I know where you're wanting to go. It's this one, right?
Well, if you look under free resources, yeah. This is a page on my website. That's my newsletter archive. So each month I just go to and put the newest one on top. So anybody can go back and look at any of these previous month sways uh and that's just a a link to a sway that's on my website.
So good. And yeah, you have that going back several years. Uh that's fantastic. And it's in that nice sort of centered, mobile friendly format that would look really good if somebody opened it up on their phone too. I love it. I love it. Uh there's a quick question here and then thank you so much, Cara and Sheila, for your patience getting to you here in just a second. Uh I Cotty asked, so this is something you would directly share into the email as a feed or something they would click and visit this way. Uh so sways are not embeddable in email like they're embeddable on pages. So going back to what we talked about in the very beginning, the most optimal thing to do would be to have the sway on a page on your Get Oiling site because that way people are clicking on a link and going to your website for email. That's good for your website authority health. We'll just, your website health. Um so that's the ideal thing, or you could just simply take the link to this way and you can put the link to this way in the email as well. Uh that is slightly more expedient, uh but uh just like um you know, fast food is slightly more expedient. You got a healthier option with homemade, right? So definitely aim to put sways on pages on your website where you can. Uh but you know, if you need to in a pinch, you could definitely just send the the message.
Then if you go in, if you have a members area, if you have a vault uh for members area, this, those are great um product education tools. Uh I don't know if you have any examples of that.
We have a whole course.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. So if you guys uh get into how to move your groups off of Facebook, uh that is actually what we focus on is um for the content sort of cheat code is if you have Grow Workspace bundles, uh using those as the teaching content inside of your vault. So definitely check that out if you guys are looking to build out a member area. And Greg just put the link there uh in in the chat as well.
And if and if you do start making your own sways, remember to put those in your members area. You know, you might design it for a particular purpose like to send out a product education on a particular thing. Go add it to your members area because people may not get the email or they may not open it, but they may find it later. So make it useful in multiple places.
Yeah, I think that's really the the biggest benefit of using sways because everything you do in a sway, you can basically create in some way in a page and Get Oiling if you want to design a page. But if you want to take the thing that you designed and easily pop it into all of these different places, then this is a really great option for you because if you create something that's meant to be publicly shared, but you also want that to show up in your member area uh as like a lesson in an online class, it is portable in that way. So great point. Thank you so very much for coming out and sharing this with us today, Jackie. Uh if you're able to stick around, you guys, if you have questions, maybe you can put those into the Q and A. Really appreciate you coming and sharing that. All right, Cara, I'm going to bring you out here. You had a question about how you go about um sharing resources for your oils of the Bible class. So let me go ahead and bring you out and we can run through that together. Hi.
Hello.
All right, so um you've got your oils of the Bible uh class that you're teaching and you you're wanting to get a resource out to everybody who is already registered or are you collecting registrations?
No, so I want to, the resource that I give them to have so they can follow along on the class is about three or four pages. When I'm, when I'm just teaching that in my home for a few people, I just make the copies. But this is, there's gonna be a lot of people there and so I don't want to kill so many trees. Plus, I, this is all new people. I want to gather their um email. And so as a two in one thing, I I'm gonna say, hey, everyone, get out your phones. Um you know, either send your email, whatever. Send them to a page that I'm gonna get their email and they're gonna get all the notes for the class that they're gonna have. And then I want to have a you know, obviously, I'm gonna put a wishlist and you know, my link on there to anything that they hopefully will purchase. So
Okay.
That was the best way to do that.
Okay, would there be a reason for them to maybe later on print or access this thing that you're giving them?
Yes, I would like them to be able to print it.
Okay, so what I would do is take the thing that you want and um and make a PDF out of it in Canva, right? So just a printable eight and a half by eleven PDF. Okay, when you create that PDF, you're gonna come over to the videos, images, files section on your site and under files, you're going to upload just as you have done before with some other PDFs, right? You're gonna put your PDF in here. And then you're gonna create a landing page and this is where they're gonna register and um you know, you're gonna capture their information. Right? So that's got our landing page. That's where they are going to interact. And then the campaign where you interact, you're gonna create a campaign. And in that campaign, I'll just use one of the examples that you have here for existing one. I think you've already done it. You're just gonna attach that thing just like you've done right here.
Okay.
Yeah. And then just make sure because it's intended to be printed and the the wishlist is not gonna print very easily uh necessarily, like the link. Uh maybe you could use a QR code if it's meant to be printed. Maybe have that go to your wishlist, scan me to shop perhaps. Um you could have it linkable, like clickable link um and also have the QR code. So if they keep it on their phone, they could click it, but if they do choose to print it, uh then they could still use that QR code to get to your uh your list. So so yeah, I would just create a PDF, pop it into this campaign and then attach the campaign to that landing page.
Okay, so questions. So my document is currently sitting in Google, so I can just may move that into Canva as a PDF.
Ish, yeah. Um you could like copy and paste. You'll you'll want to format it. Yeah, Canva has some nice templates. It'll make it look cute. And then you would just copy the text and then paste it in uh to Canva and and make it look how you want it to.
Okay. So, all right. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, good, good. Happy we could help and I could look at your class. All right, Sheila, thank you so much for your patience. I'm excited to talk with you about your um your Zito process here or your iToby. What, tell me a little bit about what you're doing.
It is Zito.
Uh huh.
Um with the new Zito link, you know, I was doing Zito Insights before, but with the new Zito link, everything is on a mobile app. And so um that's different from Zito Insights. You could view view everything on the laptop or on a computer. And I personally and heard from many other people that it was, it's difficult to kind of um view everything on the app because there's just so much information there. So what I have done is I created an Excel file which in, which incorporates summaries. See, there's one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six. There's like seven different summaries that I incorporate on three different tabs in the Excel. I pull, I, you have to add all the information to a data file and then that's gonna pull it all out into different pivot tables. And then it creates all these different summaries um gathering different information. So you can really get a good grasp of what the information is and what's cool about it is that the difference between what I saw between Insights and Link is that on Insights, when you used to select a product under a particular system, it would show you what it did for that system, but it also showed you the other systems that it impacted. And there is a way to pull that information out into this data file. It just isn't real clearly evidenced by the the app itself. So that's just one of the benefits. You can actually pull these things out. And then you can really decide which products might be best for the person depending on what they are wanting to do. So um I don't know if I I I can show you, you know, what these look like. If, I'm not sure if I have the ability to share my screen or not. I don't think I do. But um if what I'm wanting to do is make this um available to others, um I'm thinking I can create a vault for this like 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 a prepayment to entry into the vault. And after hearing Jackie's um information here, uh it's it's definitely a um a learning curve for people if they're not used to Excel or if they're not used to pivot points. But I have everything created and all the information in there, like all of the stressors are in there or the biomarkers are already in there in dropdown boxes on the data sheet. Really, all they have to do is add the names of their clients and then the data for that information. And um so if I have that, I'm thinking a sway, I could put into the vault um detailing different videos detailing how to do it, different tips for how to manage pivot tables, things like that. I don't know how much it's what kind of value I would put on it. Um that's what I
Okay, so it sounds like this is a product for people who use Zito Link uh to more easily gather and share targeted information with their people who are getting scanned. Is that roughly correct?
Correct. And the other um takeaway is that currently, if somebody is scanned locally, not remotely, then they don't have, then that client does not have access to that report. There's no way to email it to them. So by having it in this Excel format in these pivot tables, you can export each one of those into a PDF which can then be loaded up into Get Oiling on each client's profile and can be emailed to them.
Okay, okay. Wow. So this is um, I mean, you flew over my head at pivot tables. I don't even know what those are. I'm not, I'm not a spreadsheet girl. But uh this is, this sounds fascinating. It sounds very well researched and and developed. A couple of quick things. Uh number one, I would maybe go into maybe our Get Oiling community and 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 kind of see what people who are actively using Zito Link um are or sort of finding their challenges to be, if this is something that that really resonates there. Another and really important one uh would be to just make super duper sure that there isn't any proprietary information from Zito that's being kind of included into this, right? You want to make sure that you aren't violating any kind of terms of use with them. Uh because there is, there is definitely a line uh between um you know, a a company sort of proprietary processes and then creating, supporting things for people who use uh that company's product or or service. So uh definitely, you know, be super, super duper clear about that. Um because it does sound like there is some information that you're compiling depending on where that's coming from and how you're gathering it. You you just want to just make sure you're 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 super clear on that. Uh but then, yeah, I I I would maybe consider going in and pulling in our community because that is gonna be representative, I think, of a lot of people who do use Zito, even though there are certainly a lot more. Um and if there are things that maybe integrate into Get Oiling and sort of how they pull together, uh then yeah, that maybe there's something there. Um I, being someone who doesn't do Zito Links, uh you know, I I don't know that I could necessarily tell you, uh you know, when, when um or I couldn't necessarily um expound on on, you know, the user issues. Uh Dr. Brown says Zito needs to hire you. That is uh a very good point. Maybe this is something you could take directly to them. Um that's a, that's an interesting idea as well. Uh and I would also uh potentially, if you haven't chatted about this yet uh with Dr. Linda, who did the Scanning Solutions Academy that that we have on our Partners page, there may be uh some potential there as well. I would definitely ask and I know you're a part of her group. I would definitely maybe ask her group uh as well, just to kind of get an idea for like, you know, is this something that you could see yourself using? Uh you know, what would that be worth to you? Just kind of doing a little bit of research there uh with the folks who who might potentially want to use this, provided of course that it is uh crossing all of the uh legal Ts and dotting all the legal Is, et cetera.
Yeah, that's a good point about contacting Zito. I definitely, um I have a couple people, few people who are beta testing it right now. They absolutely love it because it's just the information that's um just looking at the mobile app is just overwhelming. And I know for clients, it's overwhelming to them. I have used it already with a couple clients and they just like it. It's just um easier on their eyes and it's just easier, quicker for them to be able to see a summary of what it all means.
Yeah, that's really great. Uh Maryness uh is uh here in the chat uh and mentioned uh that she has expressed some of those same concerns to Zito and they did inform her that they're coming out with an update to the app soon. Uh not sure what it's going to include, of course. Uh but uh but yeah, I would maybe maybe start a conversation in our Get Oiling community and 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 let's see where that goes. Uh and I would certainly be interested, uh maybe shoot me an email as well uh to to kind of see a little bit more of what you're talking about. Um and uh yeah, I I think that this sounds like a solid solution to a problem that you've described. And uh I think that there's definitely some folks who I think would be very curious about uh about how how that would work and how they could use it.
Are you able to um make me, are you able to allow me to share my screening? I can just show you real quick.
It would require me to remove you and then promote you to panelist.
Oh, okay.
So and and just just for the sake of time as well, but um but how about just should be a message. I would actually be thrilled to hop on a call with you. Uh and and kind of talk through this together and 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 see, you know, what what kind of potential is there if there's something that might be shareable for the community.
Okay, that sounds good.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for coming out, Sheila. Awesome, awesome. You guys, there's so much great uh creative energy here in the space. Jackie with the sways, Sheila doing just brainiac work on um Excel spreadsheets and pivot tables. Uh thank you guys uh for being here, for sharing your genius with us. Uh Deanna, um I think we can, we could paste the bundle in one more time. We will be putting that uh in the YouTube description when we post a replay later today and we'll be sending that email out uh to you as well. Um again, thank you guys for sticking around. Thank you again to Jackie. And uh we will be back here same time next week. Till then, hope you guys have a great week.